No. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it automatically starts when someone joins it too. But I think it's set up just in settings to do it.
What brings you here?
After a specific.
I want some flowers. Happy Fourth of July, flowers.
All right. I think I have got flowers for the Fourth of July.
Well, you know, that's my business. So I want to make sure that everybody gets flowers for the Fourth of July.
There you go. Yep. That's sent through, that's great. Yeah.
Hello, how are you? Good, good. We still have donations we need to bring over. But we'll get to it.
Welcome back.
Hi, Randy.
You haven't got wounds?
No, you weren't gunned down.
You see, wounds will replace, is that what he said?
Oh.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, we had about seventy people.
That's all early.
Same.
Yeah, a lot of attention. We're there for that. It's coming out of ours. Sure.
I always listen to that. Pointing.
Cheeked off.
But it's sort of very nice with the structure.
Oh, gotta get some flowers.
Yeah, yeah, it's good to see. It's miles. To get started.
Please. Hey, Andy. Listen. When you used to have interns? Are you using? Three years ago and this time it was good. I didn't have the. I changed it for two years. Deep up, we kept some water. I said, probably send the X bars and water. What do you got in here? Yeah, except you. You don't want to mess with the throw.
Randy, you're much, you're gonna be awesome. You got puppy power tonight anyway.
Puppy power? Did y'all got a reference Scrappy Doo?
Yes. Or some, at least Glassy or somebody.
Just go, Mary.
It's okay. A little nervous.
Stay in the city.
Whenever, no, then are you doing it or men? Uh, no, I always. I, that's the other. It depends on the charter that the mayor does, huh?
Hey, you want here, go ahead.
Well, I'll wait.
The plan from those.
Yeah.
My daughter may have a grandma as my day. And, uh, but. We're gonna do the parade. Right, who will? I got a question. I'm glad you.
Yeah. And I have junior friend.
There's my creative gal. What?
Hi, baby.
This is. This is.
Okay.
Very. Yeah, they won.
Did make sure.
They raced them. I've discovered that, right, so. I like.
Well, you did it last night.
Okay. So. Yeah, it's like. Something has started. Well, yeah, that's just. Yes. Start to. Yes.
Wow.
That's big.
Really, Robbie?
Nice.
Here up.
How you guys doing?
Donkey, Copper and I are still alive.
Huh?
Copper and I are still here live.
I see that, I see that block. I'm going to go see them.
I think they were today. Paul Street.
It's that.
So I got something.
Exactly. I mean. Serious. Sweet. All the same. You see what I got? The basketball.
Yes.
This is. All right. With, uh, yeah, we can. So. She does. That actually was done.
Good to have you back, partner.
It's good to be back. Spreading. He also said, oh, he's taking out for ten days. He didn't have me. Set us the whole glass.
Can I show you? That's the. Don't take us. I'm like. Five.
Yeah. Certainly, see you guys.
Yeah, there's the community.
It's just not enough. Yeah, okay. There's the one man. Let's get here. I am. Yep.
Check right out of my.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's something. But it's no joke. I mean, well, same. That's crazy. Yeah. Yeah.
Got him, got him. So I love it.
Yeah, this shouldn't be too bad.
Like, what do you guys feel inside your brain?
Sorry. I had some.
Oh. Hello. This place.
Do it, Dan.
All right, man.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yes.
I.
Thank you.
That is a great guy. I do what I can. They've got, they've got sure. Actually, they have an interview. Right. I've heard it's their. More like. Okay. Right. Yeah. They, uh, yeah.
No. Oh, that's great. Amanda.
Yeah. That's right. That is like.
But you can.
They're like. They did.
Oh.
Yeah.
You don't.
Yeah.
How are you? Now, don't give me whatever.
Yeah. We don't love you.
Training.
We're bringing it all.
If you want some puppy stuff. Uh, I put in the puppy too, because he just does, I mean, and then he has those signs.
Some of those. That's all.
Guys. Oh, this is, these are. Yeah.
Not while you. Yeah. That's.
So.
I'll sell. I'm gonna. I'm like, so. Like, so.
I'm saying. Thanks, man.
No, like. I say. Anyway, it's a good day. I was changing your name. I didn't bet it.
It's that one.
Betty.
That goes good.
It bangs. That's what it looks like.
That's okay.
Yeah, believe the conversation. Yes.
Their actual name.
Someone's.
Oh, no. Yeah. You know. No.
Why are we trying to help you? So.
Yeah, I'm running.
He didn't.
I'm. You know.
I don't think.
Since this morning.
You know, I've been asked that a lot today.
What do you know?
Because I'm beginning to think, okay, no, someone, I know him.
You know a lot of stuff, you know.
Don't get. Hey, what do you know? What do you know? And I'm thinking, oh, that's just, I think that's. Respond. See, she's.
Don't talk to me.
Because now it's like a.
She never is like.
Well. That's it. I didn't answer. I say, just see it. Yeah, they're. That's. He doesn't. Yeah, I'm quick with. Secretary. Who said? Yeah. Bill's. But not even that. Still, I don't worry.
You only have.
It's like a.
Fine.
You're the scale. Exactly. As much as you're active.
Oh.
Well, that's.
You're lucky, really. I'm literally tired of these things. There's a coffee machine. Be a person.
Yeah. They were. Be the. Off stuff. So. In the. I hope it's.
Make some.
That's great. Look at that. I. You're. You. That's true. Aren't you? Yeah. Aren't you?
When I popped in, I saw my responding, just, hey, I'm here.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. I didn't know you had a little like that. I felt better. Now, I don't know. You said, but if you text me.
We're on the scare mouth rehearsal. Just be a star.
You're going to. Hey, uh, serious? Want to, uh, in all those. Did you, did you say, I say the same thing? It's just pretty awesome. He lies like. So. He said, you, I mean, it's. I picture just kind of that same. Yeah. It's just great. I had. So. It's not stupid. Along with. Now, if you'd been asking. They might say it's too bad.
These are voting to be. What time is it?
So.
So, I'm. Ah.
Wait, is. But then.
Yeah, she's right there, yeah.
Maybe as well. We have to cash you. I got one for the top. Let's do it. Yeah. Dave's phone. Yeah. Yes. You got it on some juicy plans, too. Soon as that's there. Right. But we have seven. You're.
Round one.
You. It's. Kelly. You didn't return. Wait. Next. I haven't. That's. My. Hi. Hey, Lynn. How are you? I heard the voice. I'm well. How about you? It's good. It's not, don't rush.
So my.
Have it ready. Thanks for the guy. Well, your turn, mate. Either way. He called. Yeah. Yeah. You can send him his.
Somewhere. Kristin. You got it.
Right. You're a lobotomy. Nope, I'm calling up. He buttered on the. Yeah. I'm very strange. Right here. Yeah. Yeah, you can look. Yeah. No, should be good to go. We see it. Yeah. It looks like we should. Give up this presentation. I did. What's that? Yeah. I mean. Okay, so. Hi. I had my eyes closed. Depends. I don't think I've taken it. I could. Somebody's talking. I could use that. Okay. Yeah, sure. He's. Just like. This way. So. I was. I don't know. I raised. Awesome. Called. I can't. I didn't call the. Where is? It's in the scanner. Yes, thanks. Thank you.
Ace.
We. Maybe. Do you?
Oh, no.
I'm.
I'm. I got. Oh. I'm sorry.
Seriously.
We're going off.
You still. All right. Everyone ready? Go try. So. Have your, grab a coffee? Okay. Yes. Oh, yeah. Right, Pete, Trent, you. Guys, ready? Yeah.
Oh.
Are you guys ready? What? Yeah. Okay. Ready is still.
I know, whenever.
Uh-oh, we have Brian Brand doing it. All right. Officers, I hope you see this sentry. What are you late? Yeah. Voice.
Yeah.
So. Oh. What's. Pictures. We say. And then also say, guess the weather. Sam reported. Eric and Cab. I'm. Yep, we haven't been out there, so figure out what the damage is.
But. But.
Said it's like. Even do it. Yeah. Even do it, the day. Yes. That's. Oh, it's. I knew it sounds. Just. And one that you. Then. I want chat. There's a certain. Kind of sound would be. I'm. Just waiting on our TV coverage. Sorry.
There's right. About pulsing. I'm right here. I should.
Don't beg me. It's. He's like so. Been gone so many. It's kind of. Spikes. You fix it. Meta.
What do you want? Yes, sir.
I feel like.
I can't.
So. Okay. Take. I was at a. More friends. So. I think. Me and you.
He's just. So. Well, I told her.
Yes.
We will. Stuggle.
Probably.
No. No.
I.
Yeah. Now, why says their first. You said. Nobody got. But I'm still. No, I.
Okay. Well. Bring the. No, we're gonna cut those. It's good. Any seven hands. Six. For turning off. Well, that's. Very. He's always.
So. That's. Fine.
He also goes. Big. He.
Yeah, so. For example. Same. So. Always. And I'm. Bottom. Biggest. Free.
See.
One. I mean. Success. That.
I believe. All of it. So.
Also. So.
My buddy. That. Second. Yep.
Yep.
Those are five. We're. We're boarding the team.
Yeah.
Too sure. Yeah, we should be up. So.
Call the order for the Watertown City Council meeting for July 1st of 2024. Please rise, welcome Councilman Shuddy back. And listen attentively and pray with him as he leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this, this day that we have to the freedoms that you've given us as we reflect here this July 1st and this week to come. With just our country and the freedom that many men and women gave their life in the decades and centuries past, so we could have the freedom that we have today. To gather here in this room, together and, and as a community, to everyone in this room and everyone watching in the city, whatever we're up to this day, or the freedoms we have to go about our, our business. And so we ask for your wisdom now as we, as we gather tonight and decide on certain scenarios and, and just your wisdom, your guidance. Pray a blessing over all those servicemen and women right now, they're out there currently serving to around the globe. On the behalf of this country and others around the globe as well. So we just pray a blessing over them all too, and we just praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's Officer Bob Zine, please call and call.
Okay. Peters.
Here.
Shuddy.
Here.
Tupper.
Here.
Beeler.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Colleen.
Here.
Duren.
Here.
Quorum is established, the chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Beeler, second by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion on that? Very none, the motion is to approve the agenda, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody say aye? Motion carries. We're on to open forum, if there is someone here who would like to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your time to do so. We're on an open forum right now, DeeDee, if you wanted to.
Oh, I did, actually, I have to swing on up here. Good evening and happy Fourth of July. I'm just stopping in to say hi and to bring flowers. Those are from my front garden. They're about five or six plus years old Asiatic lilies. They're one of our offerings right now, so y'all can stop by anytime and pick some flowers and pet the puppy. So blessings to you on this July 4th, may it be the best Independence Day with the biggest fireworks show in the state. Thanks.
Thank you very much, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on something not on today's agenda? All right. I'll close that and I will switch seats to give the State of the City speech. All right, council, thank you very much. This State of the City speech was put together by City Manager Mac, our Public Information Officer, Kelly Fritz, and all of our department heads. We contacted all of them ahead of time, asked them what they would like to highlight from the last year of the city business. And I would like to preface it by saying, uh, City Manager Mac and I went over this presentation not long ago. And it was really impressive, the amount of things that we have accomplished in the city of Watertown. I know it's very easy for us to get caught up in the minutia of day-to-day drama, but I don't think anyone should ever underestimate how much we have accomplished for the good of Watertown. So priorities in local government can be expressed in intangible ways, but are always measured in tangible metrics. So you can talk about what you think is important in government, but in the end, it comes down to where you spend your money and where you put your resources of people. Those are the two things that the city, that the city government has the most power over. And where we expend those resources is where we see results. So in the past, we have been, we have been intentional for the last year and a half especially, and really addressed the money where we wanted it and the resources of our people especially. This was last, this was the last presentation of the State of the City. This is what we listed as priorities. Look at how well we've done. Park plan, done, street department, you could call that started as well, because we have, we have a lot of progress on that. City Hall project started, going to be done. Ice Arena, done, Foundation Plaza, done, Phil Bacon City Positions, done, update and amend city ordinances, well on the way of getting that done. Conservative physical stewardship of tax dollars, done. This has been a good year for Watertown. We're gonna start with, with streets. Streets used to be the number one topic that I was always asked about. When I became mayor, that was far and away the must, the number one topic that people asked about. And I've got to say, I'm not even sure if it's top 10 right now. And there's a very good reason why that is. Now, there's of course always people who are going to be negative about streets, because whenever anything good or bad happens in Watertown, people will take to Facebook and they'll say, they'll make an offhand comment like, oh, yeah, well, we can build a Taj Mahal of the ice arena, but we can't fix a pothole. That is just blatantly not true. And the reason why is because look at this. If you go back, City Manager Mac and I, when we both came on in 2021, we made a pact with each other that we were going to address this number one festering issue in Watertown head-on. And we did that by appropriating and being intentional with our people and our resources. Just look at the figures down there. 2014, 1.9 million. Right before we came into office, 2.9 million. Now we are spending 6.45 million dollars. We have also spent 4 million last year, 5 million in the previous year. Now, and I also want to be very intentional about pointing this out, because we could even spend more, but you get diminishing returns. We have had presentations on that before, because you can spend more, but all you do is, there, there's a certain limited workload of contractors and our own street department that can actually go to work. And there's also a limited resource of the supplies that we need to fix the roads. So we have reached a very nice balance between how much money we are paying and the return on it. Because if you spent more, you're actually gonna get less of a return on the dollars. So we're being very smart with how we plan it, as well as really showing where our priorities are and putting money where our mouth is. We have been very smart. I'm going to make a big deal about the IT department in today's, in today's speech, because they have done a lot of great work for us. This is the new city website. If anyone ever has a pothole, the fastest way to get that pothole is go to the city website, go to the report a street concern, and then you will basically pinpoint on your computer where the pothole is, and they will get people out there immediately. It actually makes it so much faster than it has ever been done in the past. The other thing that we've been doing to get our streets going so much better is we have been working smart. And you'll see that logo, work smart up there quite a bit, because the processes of how we do our work in Watertown has changed significantly for the better in the last couple of years. For example, in the past, we would have like a crew that would go out and do part of the pothole work, and then another crew would come out and finish it, or they'd go out to different sections of town. Now we actually have a plan. We separate the town by wards and quadrants. We send people out, they already have a map of every pothole in that ward and quadrant, and they go one by one by one until they're all done in that specific part of town. That is way more efficient, gets all of the work done a lot faster, a lot better, and it makes a better, better workload for our people. They're able to accomplish more. And so now we have three different pothole crews that go out and basically solve that issue. We have the right equipment and better operational procedures. So in the past, just, this is another factor that I want to point out with the streets. Blocks milled and overlaid in 2020 was 32. This year, that will be 99. You can see the improvement. Just, I mean, the pure numbers will show you the improvement that Watertown has experienced. Blocks of road construction in 2020 was 7.7, now it's 8.5. 2024, we have 420, 402 asphalt road repair cutouts, and over 5,500 potholes were repaired by hand last year. Our pavement management system and our pavement condition index shows those numbers. We are at 65 now. A few years ago, we were at a 61. 65 is the very high end of basically where communities can get rated. Anything above that is exceptional. And we are due to go into that exceptional category next, or two years from now, I think it is. Here's graphic proof. I'm just gonna point out this real quick. You can see, like, right here, this is the number of streets in town that are very good, exceptional and good. Very poor is very, is way down, and then this basically just shows the condition of the roads. And really, and this is, this is not the city of Watertown that grades this. Okay, this is an outside entity that grades other communities as well. So Watertown is being graded in comparison to other communities, and we do very, very well, which is exceptional when you look at this, because I've pointed this out before, and I want people to remember this, because if you ever compare Watertown's roads with any other like community in South Dakota, you are not actually comparing like communities. Watertown is much larger in the surface area of roads, and we actually have a very small department. So street division staffing is 15. Our miles of streets is 183. If you count alleys and other things into it, we're well over 200 miles. Look at this. So Aberdeen has 157, then Mitchell 135, and Brookings 108. To compare Brookings to Watertown, when they have almost the exact number of people, we do more with fewer people and better working processes than any community in South Dakota. I would, I would, I'm okay saying that right now, because you just look at the numbers and look at what we're facing. We've implemented a new snow removal policy that will allow us to clean our roads faster and more efficiently. Now, we had a lot of debates about that. We probably didn't see the full result of that last year, because it was a very mild winter, but hopefully things will be shown that this was a good procedure change in the future. One thing I want to remember, remind everybody is, everyone who works for the city of Watertown are real people. They just want to have a job, they got family, they got lives, they got spouses, they've got kids, and they're just trying to do a job. And I will say that knowing a lot of them, they are salt-of-the-earth people who are just really trying to improve the community that they live in. Our finance department has continued to excel, always receiving a certificate of achievement in financial reporting. They've upgraded their financial software, which is going to improve the process. Another shout out to the IT department on that. Our budget and revenue, when you look at this, were still pretty healthy. So the 12-month period, the last 12 months, we're coming in at 2.34% increase. Six-month period is 3.4 rate. Go over to the, this is the triple B tax. At the triple B tax, Watertown is excelling above the norm. We're at over 4% on that, almost up to 5% in the last six months. Over the last five years, you can see Watertown is basically growing. This is the first two pennies. Watertown is growing very well, not quite as much as Brookings, but keep in mind, you're gonna see Brookings and Vermillion listed here. Their numbers have spiked considerably, because they get a lot of money for improvements to the university. Whenever the university builds a new school, a new swimming pool, a new dormitory, that is millions upon millions of dollars that is taxed in that community. So Watertown does extremely well for what we have. And this is the triple B tax, look at Watertown, number one. So we're doing really well in that regard. However, you look at just the last couple of months, there is a reason for caution. I'm gonna point out February. If we took February out of the mix, we're doing okay, but you can't. In February, we were down four and a half percent. So as a result, this year, we're experiencing just 1.7% growth. Just a reason to be cautious, not a reason to ever, you know, completely put the brakes on, or call out the safety parachute, but just be cautious. Triple B again, doing very well. Stormwater. Uh, there's gonna be several things in this presentation on things that a lot of people in Watertown never pay attention to. And the reason why they never pay attention to is because it's going so well, you don't have to. Stormwater is one of those. So we have top, top-notch inlets, pipes, drainages, creeks, all that stuff. We have automated the software, so whenever there's a new development, the developer, the contractor and staff can all go straight to the software. And every time anything is done in that development, they can go in, they can click a checkmark, and then everyone sees it in real time. And then the other advantage in that is you know, let's say if there is a staff member who has not done their job, is lagging behind, you can see it exactly on the, on the software, and you can say, hey, I need you to do that. So there's no loss of time and paperwork and, hey, who was handling that, who wasn't handling that? And that is an example just in stormwater, but it applies to all development in Watertown. This also minimizes paperwork, makes people more efficient, and then it also helps all developments increases home values, because we're doing the stormwater right. We're trying to avoid the issues that have happened in subdivisions in the past in Watertown. Wastewater is another thing. Focus on what's going well. You don't ever think about wastewater. So look at this. 1 billion gallons of wastewater in the city of Watertown last year. That's 40,000 gallons per person. Have you ever really thought about where your 40,000 gallons go to? For every time you cook, every time you use the bathroom, every time you use the shower, every time you water your lawn. That creates wastewater that can be extremely toxic, and we have very strict governmental rules that we have to follow. I want to say, I don't think we have had a single violation in our wastewater condition. Have we, Director Vonnai? Or very, very, very few. So we've also initiated improvement to the wastewater, to the 261 million. We, uh, we hired on Robert Gari as the new head. This is going to be the new facility. Solid waste is another thing. So we hired Scott Davis as a new superintendent with 38 years of senior level management. Again, trash is something that largely people don't ever think about. These are things that are huge parts of the city that are going so well, and people never talk about them because they're going so well. I point this out, because I think people should gain some appreciation for the work that is done largely by the city that doesn't get the attention. So we've spent a lot of time and intentionality of resources and people into equipment and the facility there with lots of improvement. Again, uh, so the new superintendent has really focused on safety. We have had basically no safety consideration there for a long, long time, and that is a danger to the city, a liability both for our employees and for people who visit there. So safety is going to be a priority going forward. And again, it's just using your people, right? Protecting them, wanting them to get home safe, working all the time. IT department is getting my unsung heroes of the year award, because again, they do some, they do something so well that nobody pays attention. We have a new website. We have open gov software that applies to basically every department, so that now every citizen of Watertown can handle their building permits, can handle everything that they want to do with the city of Watertown online. They handle, let's see. Uh, a pet about it, I don't even know what it is. They handle a lot of data. 3.4 billion songs, 2.6 billion hours of watching video on YouTube, which I assure you, we did not test by having city employees watching 2.6 billion, uh, million hours of YouTube. So, uh, all the emails, over 3,000 a day. And again, none of us, I would challenge even the city council, have you ever really stopped to think about what goes into our IT department and how many attacks, how many cyber attacks we're getting at the government entity because of the information that we found, and we have had no violations? Something pretty extraordinary. The airport continues to do well. We have had a lot of improvements in facilities and equipments, just like the solid, or the solid waste for the, for the landfill department. Our deployments outgoing are 5,700, deplayments 5,900. Total passengers so far is 11,652. It is a little bit down, you can see that, but it is still well ahead of where we need to do to get the essential air service matching grants from the federal government. So we're still in really good place with the airport. I have heard some issues being raised by constituents about cancellations and delays, but the numbers just don't point that out. So cancellations in Watertown have been zero. That does not, that's Watertown, okay? That's not necessarily Chicago. Delays are four. So really look at the rate. We have very few, we don't have as many flights as, you know, Chicago, Minneapolis, Sioux Falls, but look at the percentage. Our percentage delay rate is actually lower than the other communities as well. So there's the delay rate. Moving on to Parks, Recreation and Forestry. They finished the master plan last year, increased the quality of infrastructure and facilities. I'm gonna cite Cacti Crossing Golf Course as an example, because this is a wonderful example where being smart, working smarter, has yielded results. They changed, or City Manager Mac changed the form of governance or management out at Cacti Crossing. So now we have one person in charge, and that is the professional Levi Pearson, and other people at the golf course report to him. Levi then in turn reports to Dusty Rodick at Parks and Rec. What this has done is created a much better way of working, much faster, much smarter at the golf course. And really, anyone who plays golf, you go out and play this, this year, and you compare it to like four years ago, and it's not even like it's the same course. It is that much improved. And a lot of that is in the intentionality of what we have done with our personnel there. We have a new disc golf course and a new bike trail. And then just listing some of the things that Park and Rec has done. Renovations at Cook Complex, renovation of Highway 20 Bike Trail, disc golf facilities, new basketball court in Morinside, two new volleyball courts at City Park, new kayak launch at Riverside Park. I actually tried that a couple of weeks ago. It's wonderful, actually. I got in and out without ever getting wet. So that was wonderful. Uh, lots of tree work, we're gonna get to that in a second. Uh, Foundation Plaza is going well, Tree City again. Uh, Derby Downs, we have leased that for the rodeo grounds. We have ADA bathrooms, um, and we have record-setting going on at the Wellness Center. So the forestry division has basically filled, has basically accomplished the entire backlog of several years in the last year, just by implementing great standards. And a lot of, lot of credit has to go to Director Rodick for that, and his people, Larry Mock, in particular, removed 400 trees that were a danger or a nuisance, uh, taken out 600 stumps, and then also planted 400 new trees. They've trimmed 476 tons of tree branches. And that would be another thing that I used to get a lot of complaints about from citizens, and I don't remember the last one that I've gotten. So well done, Park and Rec Department. We do have a danger coming up. The Emerald Ash Forest is on its way to Watertown, and we have 6,500 ash trees out of 22,000 trees in Watertown. So our Park and Recreation Forestry Department is well aware of that and taking the steps necessary to get out ahead of it, because you don't want to wait until the ash forest is already here and causing problems. The Wellness Center, 7,620 membership, that's an all-time record. So well done Wellness Center, and Teresa Hillis and all the people there, because they have 133 staff members there. The special zone events, this is one of the things that Watertown should pay attention to, 41 event days. Those are the swim meets, those are the basketball tournaments, that we bring in people, hundreds if not thousands from out of town that come into our community and really inflate the B and B, the triple B tax. That's, that's a direct comparison of how we're working across department and being smart. We, we made wonderful improvements on the Highway 20 Bike Trail and also connecting all the way around the lake. Uh, we are going to get resolution to one of the most asked questions of Watertown, which is, when is the bike trail gonna be done? And we're going to get that done sooner than later. I don't wanna, I don't wanna set a specific date, but that is what we are working for, and we have made wonderful progress on that. We have also instituted new measures like the no-mow zone. This is something that came out of the Park Master Plan. We have more park area per person than any community in South Dakota. But we also have a very small staff of Park and Recreation people. So in order to be intentional and smart about how we're going to assign those people, rather than having them mow areas that don't ever get public use, go to a no-mow zone and plant natural grasses. It actually makes things look better, saves a lot of work, lets them work to the areas that are going to impact people on a daily basis. Bramble Park Zoo is going extremely well. We'll just highlight that they've started the AZA accreditation process. Everything is looking fantastic for them right now. Still, the numbers continue to be fantastic. So hosted over, almost 54,000 guests have come into Bramble Park Zoo last year. Still a wonderful asset to the community. Library is another one of those things people largely don't even pay attention to, but I swear, if you haven't been to the library and used their resources, they are so much more than books, you don't even understand the amount of online content that you can get, the amount of resources you can get active, or act, that, um, get access to. Thank you. Uh, and then also they have things like kayaks and ukuleles. Just go there, it's a wonderful. And again, it's, this is something that is important to a lot of people. 17,000 visitors to the library just over the summer. Largely, people don't pay attention, because it's going so well. Our number one quality of life issue in Watertown is public safety, and that's the police department and the fire department. So there's a lot of highlights for the police department, but Chief Toomey and I talked, and he really wanted to highlight this community policing philosophy. We'll get to that in a second, but look at this. Total, total adult arrests were the second lowest in the last 13 years. Drug arrests were high, our K-9 dogs are doing fantastic. Uh, we have school resource officers with over almost 1,500 cases incidents, keeping our schools safe, schools safe. And then the training ongoing, this is something that you'll see in all departments in Watertown, the training for city employees, the intentionality that we are taking good city employees and making them even better. 9,000 hours of training. This is something I wanted to really point out. So last year, we had over 23,000 calls for service. Total of 23,000 calls, we had a total of 11 citizens file a complaint of action. Now that could be, an officer was rude, an officer was late, it could be something more serious, but think about that. 11 times a person in Watertown felt dissatisfied with the service from the police department out of 23,000 calls to service. That's pretty amazing. Working smart again, we have Working smart again, we have decided to take our school resource officers, they weren't, I mean, they were working in the summertime, but they were working over the school year at this, at the school. And we have assigned them to the lake for the first ever Lake Patrol Division. Now, what this has done is resulted in a lot fewer complaints, a lot fewer problems at the lake, because these offices are onsite and they are addressing problems as they occur. Instead of a call comes in and then someone gets to it maybe later, you know, maybe the next day, but they're not, in the past, they weren't there to address it. Now we have officers there to address it. Again, done with no increase in cost, resulted in significant decrease in violations, citations and complaints at the lake. This is working smart. The community engagement, this is the community aspect that Chief Toomey wanted to highlight. So there's an off, picture of Officer Rehorse, I said I'd get it in there. But the police department does a lot of activities in this town that make it a part of the community. I know it's easy for Watertown to take aspects like this for granted, but picture how many other communities in America do not have this relationship with their law enforcement. Where the law enforcement is viewed as an outside enemy entity. That is so far from the truth here in Watertown, it's ridiculous, that we have such a good relationship, and it's because our officers are part of the community. They are engaging in all of these classes, dash, dare, cap, chance, coloring with the cop. And they get out of there, and then, I, I like this one, to protect and serve ice cream. They have a ice cream truck and they go out and serve it. But these are ways that you create relationships with the community. In talking with Chief Toomey, he was saying, relationships that he created years ago are paying dividends now, because he has a, he has that personal relationship with people. And they're able to just pick up the phone and call them and say, hey, chief, I've got a problem, I, I want you to be aware of it. And the reason why that is so great is because, as Chief Toomey says, you can't arrest your way out of a problem. The best way to deal, deal with it is have your law enforcement working with the people of Watertown. There's been an approximate thirty-five decrease, thirty-five percent decrease in crime over the five-year average, making us a wonderful place to live. We have handled all calls of the region, sixty-five thousand residents, over sixty thousand phone calls. And we also have the South Dakota Legislature passed, uh, a surcharge that will ensure that we have wonderful service to come. Watertown Fire and Rescue Department has thirty-nine full-time professional firefighters. Each one receives over two hundred hours of training annually, again, investing in our people, which gets results for the community. They responded to over three thousand ambulance calls, over seventy percent of those nine-one-one calls were answered in five minutes or less. Eighty percent of all the fires in Watertown were dealt with and contained to the room where it started. They're so fast in responding that the fire doesn't have a chance to cause a, a huge problem in the community. They've gone out into the community and installed, uh, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors in the city. They also inspect buildings, again, this stops fire before it even starts. And then, what this reads up, what this means to you is because we have such a high rating on insurance service officer rating, citizens of Watertown save up to ten to fifteen percent off their insurance rates. This is a very real tangible impact that it has on the people of Watertown. Water and flooding, we've made improvements to Rover Creek in the Big Sioux. We have improved our community rating system, resulting in a fit, another fifteen percent decrease in flood insurance rate for community members who have to pay for it. We have Carla Hoyer joined our certified flood, flood plain manager, joining Justin Peterson and Brandy Hatton. We, it's normal for a community of one, we have three. We've also met with the Army Corps of Engineers, that might still be a long-term in the, in the future, but we're, we are working on addressing that. Development in Watertown continues to go at a very good pace. Last year we enjoyed almost, well, over eighty-two million dollars worth of building permit development. Projections for two thousand and twenty-four is going to be one hundred million dollars. And again, the online permitting process, open gov, shout out to the IT department again. And this basically allows people to just file their permits online, make it faster, make it better for everyone. Grand Lakes Ice Arena, we were able to start open it this year, and right off the bat, I want to point this, this is an example where Watertown is doing things right, across the board. I mean, I mean, I hope you're seeing that across the board in all the departments, but the way that we built it, we've already received a rebate of fifty-one thousand dollars, just because we're smarter with how we expend energy. And a thing like an ice arena, that's a big deal. Programming and schedule is going well, they don't have actual numbers, but the, but the preliminary numbers are exceeding all expectations for participation, both in the citizens of Watertown, the kids of Watertown. But we have already had two camps and several competitions, bringing in people from around the state. So this is a little indication, my dad and I loved the A-Team when we were young, and I love it when a plan comes together. I want to thank everyone that worked on the Ice Arena, because we were very smart, we tried to be very smart in why we built it, how we built it, where we built it, and it's paying dividends. Another thing that I don't want anyone to take granted is, we already have an NAHL team coming. It's not unusual for a community to wait years, if not a decade to get an NAHL team. We're getting one in year one. And part of that is because we worked with the commission of, Commissioner Mark Frankenveldt at the NAHL. What do you guys need? What, what can we do to make this more appealing? And they, again, I love it when a plan comes together, because we could have waited two, three, five years after the luster of the arena might have been waned a little bit, but no, we're capitalizing it right off the bat. Community Foundation or Foundation Plaza has been exceeding all expectations of the community, it really has. I don't think that the water splash park ever turn, ever turns off. Well, maybe on a day like today it turned off, but by and large, it runs twenty, well, runs every minute that it's open. And Thursday Night Live continues to do fantastic numbers. I did the postponed number simply because Tim Sheehan and I have a joke, every time he cancels, I send him a text about, are you sure this time? So, anyway, uh, we have an exciting new project coming, the pickleball facility obviously is something that a lot of people are very excited about. City Hall is, has already started, we're going to get that done next year. Recodification in the handbook, City Manager Matt can talk more about this, but the handbook is the number one HR tool that we have in the city. And they are basically updating it to conform with the city manager form of government, it was very antiquated before. And this creates new workplace priorities that will be addressed to aid in better retention of the good people we have. Again, investing in our people and being intentional with where we task them. We have two hundred and forty-two full-time personnel, over four hundred people total who work for the city, they are our most important asset. We have done strategic planning to capitalize on that, developing best management practices. We have engaged internal and external stakeholders to talk about how we can be doing things better. And one of those is, we're telling our story better, getting that out there, uh, through our public information officer and a lot of other things. The city of Watertown and the employees should be rightfully proud of what they have been accomplishing over the last year, if not three years. We've also done strategic planning at a council level, adopting mission values and mission vision and values. So we have the vision listed there, the mission and the core values, honesty, transparency, integrity, excellence, service and grace. That was adopted at a November work session for the city council. And we've also adopted governance and ends policies that will further operationalize the charter and have the council focus on the big picture planning for the community that we want. Speaking, this is E Pluribus Unum, which is out of May one, that's out of, we govern in many voices, we vote, but we discuss in many voices, we govern in one, as a city council. Speaking of our employees, we've seen many positive recent signs, so the number of applicants of jobs has increased dramatically. We used to get back in nineteen twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we'd get two, three applicants. We've been getting over a dozen, we've gotten eighteen applicants for police department applications, Ice Arena got eighteen applicants. Uh, people want to come and work here because we've, we've made Watertown an employer of choice. So, in twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-one, in those three years prior to the city manager coming, they internally promoted thirteen employees. In the three years since, not even quite three years, thirty-one employees. And that is one of the most important ways of increasing employee satisfaction. The turnover rate of employees in Watertown is twelve percent, the national average in government is thirty percent. And you can see right here, so I know that there was some talk about retention of employees, we're keeping people, they want to, they want to work here, and I think they have seen this. This is something that I really want to credit the council with and the entire city of Watertown. I ran partially upon how the city of government was running its government. And not that executive sessions are the end-all be-all of how transparent a government is, but just look at these numbers. Twenty eighteen, we had exec, we had eighteen executive sessions, twenty nineteen, twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty-two. The year that the new form of government, City Manager Matt and I came on, we had three. Twenty twenty-two, five, followed by nine and six. Total since we have come on board, combine all of those, and we almost, and we just barely exceed one of the previous years. And I also want to point out that this is with more meetings, because we've added work sessions to this, and we've had executive sessions and work sessions. So we have more meetings, but fewer executive sessions, increasing the transparency for the city of Watertown, something I, I feel is incredibly important. Better procedures for the future for the council, so we have a portal for anyone to apply to be part of a board or committee for the city of, of Watertown. We've increased opportunity for council oversight, that was something that we did right when I came on. So now every time the mayor, any, any mayor, myself included, any future mayor, they have to run an applicant through the city council for basically consideration to make, prior to it going to an official vote. And this protects the citizens, because if a citizen, I get a lot of people who are still very hesitant to apply for a board or committee, because they are worried about what people will say about them. The biggest worry is, what if I don't get voted in favor of? And by asking people, you know, do you know this person, do you have an issue, you can work with people prior to hiring them, it just allows us to hire the right people. I do, I did create an advisory board on appointments that is made up of several high prestigious members of the community and former council members that basically helped me go through all the applications that we got for boards and committees. And this is again, it's not something I can't force upon future mayors, but I think it's something that I want people to do, because I want to create new leadership for the next generation of Watertown, because we have to pass this off to other people, and you need to get them the training to do that. We do have challenges ahead, but they are also opportunities. One problem we need to discuss is childcare. We have a serious childcare issue in Watertown. We are losing one of our largest state cares, we also are however, already working on solutions. We have established the process to become the second early learner community in all of South Dakota. We have done teamwork with the Mother of God Monastery as long, as well as Watertown Development Company and Watertown School System to address this issue, because we know that not one entity, not even the city, is going to solve the childcare crisis. It also has to come from the private sector. So we have a lot to go, but we have already done a lot of work. Housing is another one. So this is, we have a record low supply, this is coming straight from the outside, uh, study that the Watertown Development Company hired. And this is showing how many, how many record low housing we have. And then this actually does have some strategies on how we can address it. We are going to have to look very attentively upon addressing some of those and implementing those, because here's the deal. This is the recommendations, they recommend a three to five year supply, they need, they, they think that we need two hundred and fifty or more single-family houses. We need eighty-four more multifamily housing. We need over five hundred and fifty more apartments. And this is from an outside source. We have, we need housing, because housing will help our businesses, and then in, in turn, this will help to other, other concerns. I always get asked, what are you going to do about bringing in tailor restaurants? The city really doesn't do much about that, because we're not going to run a Chick-fil-A, we're not going to run a men's clothing store. But what we can do is retail follows rooftop, so if we address the housing crisis, then the retailers and the restaurants will come in of their own volition. And this will also help our revenue projections. So more housing equals more sales, equals more tax revenue, equals more retail developments, it's a win-win-win for Watertown. I think we need to make it a priority. Finally, budget processes for the council, we need to make that our, one of our own priorities, because we need to really bear down on the capital improvement plan and address where our priorities are going forward and how we're going to get there. Because that is the long-term vision that the, that the community wants from the council, and that's what I think, I know that we can give them. So in the end, Watertown, life is good. Things are going well in the city, and I hope that you see that across the board, so many departments doing fantastic, I hope that you enjoy living here as much as I do. And I hope that you want to engage in helping us become even better in the future. So, thank you very much, council.
Next up on the agenda is an election of the deputy mayor. General, entertain our nominations. Councilman Chuddy.
See, I'd just like to nominate, uh, Councilman Tupper for deputy mayor.
All right, and we actually don't even need a second for a nomination, I don't think. Is there any other nomination?
Yeah, can nominate Mike Danforth for deputy mayor.
Any other nominations? All right, I would like to, excuse me, I would like to allow both councilmen the opportunity to speak to the council and to the community. Give you a chance to, if you accept the nomination, that is, if you accept the nomination, I would like to give you a chance to speak. So, um, I won't limit the time, I figured that you guys know how to do that. So, I'll go in order of the nominations, Councilman Tupper.
Well, first off, thank you very much, gentlemen, for nominating me. Uh, it's, uh, it's definitely a humble, humble nomination. I've spent a lot of time in, in City Hall in the last year being the deputy mayor, and, and a lot of things that the mayor spoke about in his, his, uh, State of the City address, we've discussed a lot of those, uh, nobody's perfect, we've always got room for growth. I think a lot of the things that we faced in the last year that we've been able to accomplish, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, I guess, there's been a lot of meetings. But, uh, like I say, it's a very humbling experience. Six, seven years on the council now, um, I feel that my experience and common sense and, uh, gets me to where I need to go, I think a lot of times we make things difficult, that's why I really enjoy my common sense approach to things, so with that, that's all I got.
Thanks very much, Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to start with my birth, way back in, that probably got to take too long, but really, you know, for, for purposes of this position, uh, there's any one of the individuals on this side are going to do a fine job, they, they need to do assist the mayor, assist the, the staff. And, and they need to be representative to the council, that, that's a big part of what this position is. From my standpoint, um, I, I try to be a problem solver, I try to look at things and fix things and make things better. So, um, probably, probably as men, as much as anybody, uh, I always offer my two cents, keep saying I'm going bankrupt with all the two cents I offer out, but, um, you know, so wherever this goes, uh, the, the city's in good hands.
Thank you very much. I will hand out ballots. Oh, you all have ballots already? Okay, then what I would like to do. And what we will do is write down the name of the person you want to vote for, Councilman Tupper or Councilman Danforth, and we will have our city attorney collect these. I want a outside third party, I don't want to touch the ballots and be accused of vote tampering or anything. Hey, I trust our city attorney to do a hand count.
Jeopardy, is this it?
Um, yeah. Did any, anyone need to grapple pop while we're going?
Yes, I gotta take that.
Yeah. And we just need the result now, the total.
Yep.
Although I will add, it was close. But it is Councilman Tupper.
Okay. Moving on to item nine A, an approval of a bid award for the two thousand and twenty-four golf course improvements, project number twenty-four twenty to Mac landscaping in the amount of roughly two hun- two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven thou- nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. City Manager Mack, do you want to take it on or?
Yeah, I sure can. Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you, you've seen this before, is the patio project out of Castle Crossing. You had originally awarded this to Creative Vision Design of Watertown. And it was during the pre-construction meeting that it was discovered that there were some things that are, are part of the project that were inadvertently left out of the bid. And again, they weren't detected until the pre-construction meeting. And so in order to uphold the integrity of the bid process, and we did talk with our city attorney, we had some conversations with Creative Vision. And the best pass, path forward was to move on to the next lowest bidder, which is Mac Landscaping out of Castlewood. We, myself, Director Vonai, Director Roddick are here to assist to answer any questions you might have. And with that, I'll stand by for questions.
Director Roddick, would you like to add anything? All right. I don't have to take, treat this as a public hearing and it's not going to be a public hearing necessarily, but I know that there's someone here who would like to speak on this item. And so I would like to invite anyone who would like to speak on this item to come forward and address the council.
Hello, my name is Jesse Nygaard and I am the owner of Creative Vision's landscape and design that was the original low bidder on the project. I guess I can just start, I don't need to take a whole bunch of your time, but a couple of the things inside of the bidding documents are what made me, I guess, what made me decide to, what to include and what not to include. So if you look at the bidding documents, I don't know if anybody has those or not. There's three different items that say that the owner is going to hire or supply during this project. So the first one is that the carpenter is going to be home. The carpenter will be, I'll just read the whole thing. Base units need to be installed by the carpenter that the owner hires before the construction. The electrical work will be hired and paid for by the owner. And the gas lines and hookups are the responsibility, responsibility of the owner. So I guess I interpreted that as, you know, all three things are going to be supplied by the owner. And that was going to be that. So I never took any, any of those three any farther. I talked to some city staff on it before this and I was told that all those contractors are already selected. And I know for a fact, you know, the carpenter was asked to show some different pictures of items that he's built in the past. And again, none of that really mattered to me because I assumed that it was not part of the bid. If you look at the project material that talks about all the rock and all of the pavers and all the patio, or all of the cap for the wall and the wall block, given specifically calling out the corner units for the, for the block. Again, nothing in there that says anything about carpentry work or any type of shingles, any type of material basically for, for the structure. If you look at the bid form, the bid form does say that it's a forty-two by eighteen covered patio with surrounding paver patio and a concrete turnaround. I guess I took that as the bid form saying that the covered portion of the patio will be paver, pavers as well as the pavers around it. So to me, they were just saying everything's going to be pavers, doesn't matter if it's covered or not. I know during the bidding process, there was a couple of prices that weren't given to me to include into this bid, again, because I assumed that they were all going to be owner supplied. First time that I ever knew that this project was to include any carpentry work was when we were in the pre-construction meeting. And that is accurate in saying that that is where everything went awry, if you want to say that. I had no clue who this guy was that was sitting by me. And he was a carpenter that was awarded the work. And I don't know who he was awarded it from. Because again, I never included anybody's price in mind. I guess in my eyes, it probably should be a general contractor project and everything excluded and go through it that way. I've got over twenty years' experience in bidding projects like this. We've done many projects with the city, other cities, other general contractors, construction managers. You name it, we've probably done it. We have a very good relationship with a lot of contractors and just a, just an unfortunate thing that took place here. It's not that I don't want to do the work. I mean, I sat and brainstormed trying to figure out how I could pay for this to, to do it and get it done for the city and, and have everything done for everybody. And that would have been the best outcome, but you know, financially, I just can't take that burden on to, to continue with the project. So after talking with the city and Keith and other people that we decided this was the best route, and I know it's unfortunate, but this is where we're at. So I don't know. I mean, I understand the process of moving forward and I don't know if it's approved it or not approved it, rebid it, or what the next step is. But I just wanted to say my piece with everybody and with the people in the city and put it all out there, I guess.
Thank you, Mr. Nygaard. And I'll have me stand by, it's not necessarily a give and take, but I wanted to just make, I wanted to ask one question. I just wanted to make sure that, because you said you just wanted to say your piece. I just want to make sure that you express what you wanted to say in front of the council.
Yeah, I think I said everything that I needed to. I don't think I should say too much more or, yeah.
Okay. Because there might be a question about how we do move forward because technically what's on the agenda is approving this bid, but not necessarily talking about the last bid. So it's going to be, I'll ask the council to be aware of that difference. And I'm not saying you can't ever talk about anything that happened or how we got here or anything because obviously we have somebody who is concerned. But just keep in mind that on the agenda is approval for this bid. And that's really what we're here to discuss. So thank you very much, Mr. Nygaard. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? All right. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Shetty, second by Councilman Peters. Let's open it up for comments, discussion, questions, council. Councilman Beeler.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anything we could have done better to communicate what we're looking for in the bid in that process? I guess I direct that to our assistant city, city manager. Will you come on, I?
I'm trying to. And let's, yeah, go ahead and answer that, but also answer it, I think, to focus upon this particular agenda item, let's just say, let's branch it off and say, are we sure that we've got it right this time? I guess might be the thing, or I mean, I'm not to say that we didn't get it right or.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that necessarily either, but obviously there was some confusion and you know, maybe perhaps there's a different way to do it in the future. And what, what suggestions might we have to improve on that process?
Director Vonai?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd love to help shed a little bit of light on the, the subject here. Anytime you have to bring a bid back for re-awarding it is not convenient by any means. I would like to thank Mr. Nygaard for his bid and interest in this project. We've had great conversation with him since the bids, believe before the bids were received, after the bid award, and then up through the pre-construction meeting when this incident arose, where it became prevalent that there were errors or omissions in, in Mr. Nygaard's bid. Once staff discovered that, we went back through all the bid documents and looked at the concerns that Mr. Nygaard raised here tonight. And in that research, in that review of the advertisement for bids, I can actually quick pull this up here, share with teams, just to show for context what we were looking at from a staff standpoint. So in the advertisement for bids, you know, we want, there are several documents in a bid package. The advertisement for bids is one of the first ones that the bidders see. And in that, that generally describes the nature of the work for the bid that they're entertaining, putting a number in on. A- as you can see in this advertisement for bids for this patio project, we have the forty-two foot by eighteen foot cover patio with surrounding paver patio, et cetera, et cetera. So that was the first indicator that, you know, we were, we were on the mark to substantiate the presence of a covered patio in this project. The next important document, I would say, that the contractors go to is the plans related to the work. And this is a very simple, straightforward plan set. It's only five sheets. If you exclude the cover sheet, two out of those four remaining sheets show the canopy that's to be built and some details regarding that structure related to the project. So half the plan sheets clearly identified the canopy structure for contractors to look at, the dimensioning, the posts, the joist spacing and things of that nature, or to compile a bid from. And then the third document that we referenced, which is the final one we received from the bidders, that's the, the bid form. That's a formal contract document that's in our plans and specs. And on the bid form, this is a lump sum bid, meaning the contractor will give us one number for all the work to be included. And again, we repeated the forty-two foot by eighteen foot covered patio language to make sure that it was clear that there was a, a canopy covered patio structure that was included in this, in this bid. Now, all that being said, I, I don't discredit Mr. Nygaard's points where on this plan sheet there are a couple notes that could be construed to leave some amount of ambiguity. So when staff reviews that and we acknowledge that, and those are the areas, Councilman Beeler, to your question, where we could have done a little bit better. And we will strive to continue to do better. I've said, I've mentioned this to a couple folks today who've questioned the process and the specs. And in my time of helping manage construction projects, I will say that I've never seen a set of plans and specs that are a hundred percent accurate and foolproof. There's always some room of ambiguity or interpretation or differing opinions because you're dealing with such a myriad of technical data and so many pages of it, that it's, it's undoubtedly a fact that there's no hundred percent accurate set of plans and specifications. With that being said, if these ambiguities are minor enough, we would recommend doing exactly what we're doing tonight, going to the next little bidder and proceeding accordingly. If these were a more substantiated nature, where the city really missed the ball on something, missed the mark, and it was really unclear in this packet what the intent of the work was, staff would have brought a recommendation to reject all bids and rebid this. And that would be normal and customary if that were the case. We just didn't feel that was the case here. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely. But is there enough room for improvement to necessitate rejecting all bids and starting over? I personally would not recommend that. And I know the city attorney could chime in as to her preferences and that nature, but that's where we were at from a staff recommendation standpoint and why the next little bidder bid recommendation is before you tonight.
Thank you.
Did city attorney, you want to chime in on that?
Just that prior to the decision, staff, the city manager and public works slash assistant city manager, you know, did consult, I did go over the bid package and yeah, pretty much it's, we understand that there was, I guess, you know, interpretation, but from what I saw, it was clearly laid out a couple of times and then the drawings themselves. So I, I felt comfortable in the bid process on this one, so.
Councilman Beeler, the floor is still yours.
Well, I do have one more question, I guess, and that is, we said we hired con, or we hired carpenters, is that correct? That, that's what I heard anyway. Is that true or?
No, the city has not contracted with anyone to do any part of.
Carp.
Yeah, we have not hired.
Because Jesse had mentioned that and I, I don't know what that would have been for, but okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any further comments or questions, council? Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I've been looking at this actually towards the tail end of last week because I was curious to how, how there could have been such a, a big difference in, in the, the votes that came and how that came about. And I do see without question, I shared with Mr. Vonai and, and with Ms. Mack today, that, you know, there were areas in there that I, I felt were confusing. And, but, I'm going to say but, but as we talked through it, I do see where all the primary information is contained. It may not have been in the best of formats. I think there's room for improvement on things like this. I mean, let's keep in mind, this is a very small project. And my goal is, is, my objective would be to make sure that we have a professional and fair process in, in our work in, with all of the people that, that work with the city of Watertown. So I had concerns with that initially. I can see both sides of this. I think it's just one of those things that, that happened. I think there were maybe some either misunderstandings, assumptions or communication issues. But in the end, a lot of the information that, that I thought was either missing or maybe hard to find per se, or you had to dig around to get it, you know, is in fact in the documents that, that Mr. Vonai referenced, the first document, a five-page document. So with that, you know, I, I, I really don't have any choice but, but to go with what's recommended by staff on this. Yeah, I, I feel bad about that, but that is the position that I'm, I feel I'm in.
Councilman Tupper?
I'm going to echo a lot of what Councilman Danforth, matter of fact, myself and Councilman Danforth had a couple discussions today over this. And, and when I really spent the time to, I, I was questioning the same thing, you know, especially when it's not that big of a bid to begin with and how it could be that far out. When I spent the time to go in and, and look at the plans, look at the original bid, clarity could have been a little better, I agree with Councilman Danforth, but I too am going to support this because it was there. It was there and unfortunately, it wasn't set out clear enough for the other contractors, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, as much as we're going to be deciding on this approval of this bid tonight, I also do appreciate Mr. Nygaard, is that correct? Nygaard, appreciate you showing up here tonight just to share your perspective because even though you've shared it with staff and you've worked on all that behind the scenes, it's just good for us here to hear, you know, as much as we'd like to press the rewind button and try to rework it, it doesn't seem feasible at this point. So, but I do appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? I guess one question I had, does this affect the timeline for when the project is completed?
It'll push it back. I don't have, I don't know the date directly.
Yes, yes. It's unlikely to happen.
It'll happen when it happens, I guess.
And Mayor, what we'll do there is in the pre-construction meeting is get a honed-in timeline from the contractor and make sure that it doesn't conflict with any major events at the golf course and make sure that it's set most appropriately to work with Dusty's and his team schedule.
And Mr. Nygaard, I'd like to thank you. You've been a class act throughout this. It didn't work out. It was, I know that you're, the emotions behind it, you've, you've kept your class and composure and I want to thank you about that because I know that you've dealt with a lot of people through this process. And I understand, as I understand the bid process, it's like we'd be, we have to follow the process that we have. And if the first one is rejected or rescinded, as in this case, then we really don't have an option as a city legally to do anything except to accept the subsequent little bid. So unless I'm mistaken on that. Okay. All right. Any further questions, comments? Although, hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. If you want to approve the bid award, vote aye. If you want to reject it, vote nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Chuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Onto item 10A, a first reading of an ordinance authorizing down payments to vendors on contracts with the city of Watertown. You want to read it all?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is some cleanup language, if you will. We are finding more and more that our vendors that we work with are requiring down payments or prepayment of certain items that we order with them. The way state statute is written is that unless there's explicit language that allows for prepayment or down payment in, in your city ordinances, we have to bring all of that back to council for down payments, even after you have approved a bid award. So this is giving, giving the ability to issue those prepayments and down payments for projects. And Finance Officer and the city attorney can provide more clarity if needed.
Right, this is the first reading, so there's no need for a motion, but I would encourage council discussion. Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on the process or procedure on this, if I can, just a little bit. These are items typically that we will budget, so they're going to be in our annual budget. Most of these items are going to be items that we have to go out for bid for, and then they will come to us for approval of the bid and awarding of the bid, correct? So the, with what we're seeing in this world today, you know, as far as lead times on some of these things, hasn't there been times where we've had to approve, as a viewer, Ms. Bobzine, aren't there times when we've had to approve a down payment before we've actually awarded a bid? Has that happened?
No, I don't think that has happened. I think there's kind of two parts. A lot of times we've taken action to give like the budget authority that we can preorder it, but it hasn't been the actual payment. So no payments are released from the city without actually securing the good or service. So that's what the state law requirement is.
What we have done is we've had to make down payments in advance of the budgeted year.
Correct.
Okay, that's it. So my question is, is when we, when, because we've budgeted things, and if we've gotten a bid and if we accepted the bid, can't that just be the financial side of that? Can't that just be part of us?
Same question that I asked.
It seems like once we've budgeted for it and we've bid it out and we've accepted the bid, why, why doesn't the financial part of that just flow?
Because state statute doesn't let it just flow. That's what we keep running into. So for example, the trailer, no, it was the timing system, the dash timing system that you all approved not too long ago. We have approval, we go to order it and they say, okay, we need 20% down in order to get you into the queue. Well, because, one, we didn't know ahead of time that it was going to require a down payment, we had to bring that back to you. Remember, it came back through consent. And so what we're trying to do with this ordinance is to do just that. If it's a budget.
This will enable us.
It will, yes.
Amen, I say. Councilman Danforth, anything more?
Nope.
Any further discussion, council? All right, we'll see that back at a future council meeting. 11A is a second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Watertown for a portion of Bourbon's addition from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-3 Highway Commercial District. We'll go to Public Works Director Heath Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. This is second and final reading to the city council. This is brought to you by unanimous recommendation from the planning commission from their June 6th meeting, by a vote of six to zero. This is for a portion of land out on the easterly side of town. I'll pull up a map here for reference for, as to the location. So here in the central part of this map is 31st Street Southeast. This urban linear road here is Willow Creek Drive. So you're just north easterly of the Hobby Lobby. That's this parcel of land that's shaded in purple, excuse me. It's entirely zoned I-1 right now. This blue outlined portion is what's being proposed to be rezoned to C-3 Highway Commercial District. That is under a separate ownership than the remaining larger parcel of I-1 zoning. This is land, of course, is already annexed and zoned within the city, as shown on our zoning map here. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions along with Community Development Manager Antin and/or the applicant that's here this evening.
Manager Antin, did you want to add anything? All right, I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. Can I get a motion to approve the ordinance amendment? Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Discussion, council. Councilman Germs?
Unanimous by the planning commission. No one here to talk against it.
I'm ready for a poll. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, the only question is to make sure, and we talked about it during the first reading, but the development agreement covers all of the infrastructure and roads in the form of a waiver, I believe, that is included there, so we're good?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the ordinance amendment. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzine?
Okay. Peters?
Aye.
Chuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Colleen?
Aye.
Germs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to an approval of Resolution 24-15, a resolution of acceptance for subdivision improvements for Compeska Dunes Third Subdivision Detention Pond installed by the developer Paul and Lori Carlson and DLT Development Incorporated. Director Von I?
Thank you, Mayor. Pause for a minute here as I pull up this map. All right, again, as I'm sharing to teams, this is up corner of 33rd Street and Golf Course Road. The Compeska Dunes subdivision has a long time been developing here off 12th Avenue. There's some newer development occurring here in the south. But this red hatched area is a residential detention pond that over the years just has not gotten to the point of full completion and ability to be accepted by the city. Staff have worked diligently with the developer of this earlier phase and then also the subsequent developers of these later phases to get this completed to the approved construction plans. We're to that point now and bringing it forward to council for acceptance. If you recall, detention ponds in a residential subdivision, the city normally adopts those for public ownership and maintenance, with rare exception of situations where there's a homeowners association or things like that, where there's a group or an entity that can otherwise retain ownership for maintenance purposes. Without that presence, the city typically takes that over and manages that drainage structure for obvious reasons, because the homeowners in the neighborhood simply aren't going to have that ability, the resources, the skills to keep those structures inspected and operated and functioning, functioning like they need to be. Just for educational purposes, we do not typically accept detention ponds in commercial and industrial areas. We let those commercial and industrial landowners typically retain ownership and maintenance of their structures, but residential ones we do. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the resolution. A motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Open it up for questions, comments. Anything, council? Right, hearing done, we're just going to do a voice vote. If you approve the resolution, please say aye now. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. City council member announcements and introduction, introduction of topics for future discussion. Councilman Tupper?
I knew it was going to be me. Hey, we're getting ready for fireworks. Everything's go for, for it, other than weather forecasts, so we do have a backup plan. We will be doing it on the 5th. If we got to do it on the 5th, then Manager Mack said she won't be here to do National Anthem, so I'm going to have you do it, Mayor, but no. Still got room for a little donations if people want to add on to the, my, my little fee that we're spending for the biggest fireworks displaying in the state of South Dakota. So I will start out on the 3rd at Premier's softball field for the consumer shoot. Anybody that wants to shoot out fireworks that lives in the city of Watertown, very few places shoot, so we've always put that consumer shoot together. So if you want to come down, there'll be 20 stations set up. We'll, we'll run until about 11 o'clock or until everybody's done, free of charge. Those fireworks will be down there supervising, as will I be. We, you know, safety's first in mind when it comes to fireworks, so. But we'll show on the 4th or the 5th, whichever mother nature allows. Park will be open about 5 o'clock. There'll be bouncy houses, music, concessions will be there. We are keeping hands of soccer field as family type setting with no alcohol. So if you need to enjoy an adult beverage, you can enjoy it across the street, I guess. But yeah, it's, it's, last year we had about 8,000 people on the ground. So between those two, two places and Lewis is going to put on one heck of a show. When we had our pre-meeting at the police department the other day, they were talking about, I can't remember how they were doing it, but something with a whole bunch of gunpowder and milk replacer. So I don't know what that has to do with it, but I guess we'll have to stay tuned to see and, and hopefully Mother Nature will change her, her tone a little bit and let us have it on the 4th. If not, we're going to enjoy it on the 5th and let's all have fun and let's everybody attend, so.
All right, thank you very much. And we will get that information out as fast as possible with, about the weather, deciding on whether or not we're going to go on the 4th. I don't know if anyone has ever noticed, but the weathermen have been known to be wrong in the past, so. Probably, yeah, probably doubt this year. Yeah. Any other announcements from the council? All right, city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add, Councilman Tupper, at 1:45 is the parade starts downtown on the 4th, so if you're, if you're around, please join for that.
Is the parade a go regardless of weather?
We're not in charge of the parade, so we're just, you know, we'll let you know. Yeah. No work session next week. I did send that out, otherwise I have nothing else to report.
All right, we have no need to go into executive session, therefore we are ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion? Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, if the motion is to adjourn, all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night and God bless you, Watertown.